Alright, and good morning. What does today bring us? I don't know... But we're gonna find out. Ready to yell at the screen? Well, you know, don't yell too much at the screen because then your neighbors start wondering what you're doing. And, you know, then paddy wagons call men with white jackets that allow you to hug yourself real close. It can be a little bit awkward. Alright, let's get our morning chores handled. Grab those, and what do we have this morning? I have graphic, okay, there we go. From Katori. "Attention all Sandrock residents, at last! The moment we've been waiting for is soon to arrive. Katori's Golden Goose Extravap Plaza and the Sandrock Museum in Sandrock are reopening with fabulous new additions and attractions." Aren't you all on the edge of your... Ooh, seats? Oh goodness, I got the hiccups. "Well, you better be because I'm betting the farm on this one and whoops, this pencil doesn't have an eraser. Oh well, better just go for it. The Golden Goose has heard your whispers of anticipation and tomorrow, your prayers will be answered with the grand reopening of the Golden Goose Extravap Plaza and Museum. See you all soon." Alright. And from City Hall. "Dear Lion, how are you? I'm planning to hold a fireside meeting to let our folks know about the successful experiment with the bio crust and the trees. Please come tonight at 1800, see you then." And we will plan to be there. Alright, whoa, whoa. Alright, yeah, let's go ahead and start with some wood scrap and some copper scrap. And how about more copper scrap and some rubber scrap? And then, how about some fine wood scrap and some iron scrap? And finally get that mechanical scrap going. Grab that up. Grab that up. Let's go ahead and grab the morning dew. Because water is kinda proving to be a bit of an issue. Probably gonna have to go buy some water today. I'll have to check my stores. I'll make what I can, check the stores and see what happens. Alright. Let's go here, and let's make all the water we can. Alright, so first of all, yeah, we got a lot to do there. There we go. And then the water, top that. Yeah, might be time to buy some water. I tell you what, even with a big ol' row of dew collectors, water in this game is serious. Alright. Not the most exciting that I've ever seen. Let's go ahead and grab the chromium steel. Uh, weren't we planning to do something with the... With this stuff? I don't remember. I don't remember. Were we planning to make these? Tomato beef... Oh, that's right, we don't have enough... That was tomato fish, not tomato beef brisket. Tomato fish. Oh yeah, we would need to... Never mind. I don't wanna do that. I had dew in my wood chest. Yep, I did. But, thank goodness, you don't have to have it in your hands and it just pulls it straight from it. Makes it a lot easier to deal with. Alright, oh right, we have all the... You know what? I'm kinda leaning towards just making these relic storages. But for right now, that can just sorta stay where it is. Relic, relic. Sort. Uh, let's see, where am I putting my plastic? Is that under Old World? We can put it under Old World. Uh, okay, I got my salted fish. Alright. That's weird, did I actually make only one of these? Why did I make only one of those? I don't remember where my mind was at that. Huh. Uh, let's go ahead and go to Prepared Meals. Throw that in there and throw that in there. The rest of these we'll hold on to since they are stamina. And that's sort of just some emergency healing. We can hold on to the worms. Alright. Let's check the map, and do we have any little sneaky missions today? I know later on this afternoon, we have the... The, what do you call it? The fireside chat. Wow, yeah, the commissions aren't very good today. Yes, I can do this one, this would be fairly easy. Man, rough day for commissions. Guess we'll just go ahead and do the... And do these. Nope, that's not what I wanna do. I wanted to do that one. Alright, chromium, the tempered glass and the bronze. Let's just go right here. Alright, uh, let's see, most of this would be under metals. And we got the bronze, we've got the chromium. And then the tempered glass, uh, was that under Old World stuff? Glass and... Where's my tempered glass? Ah, not sure why I had that under minerals, but... Let's go ahead and... Not... Oh wait, do I have my camel? Or I mean, my tin foil? Hey, tin foil. Almost forgot about you. Oh. Well, hello. Nice. Okay. Well, that's kinda funny, I don't remember having leftover gifts somewhere. Are those the two gifts that were on top of the sign? That Day of the Bright Sun sign? I mean, they did just sorta disappear. Maybe that's what happened to them, the game just sorta glitched them into... Glitched them into the... Hello, Crystal? Sort of glitched them there the next time I turned on the game. Oh, it's a bug? Ah, okay. Alright. There you go, Crystal. Ah, yeah, this is exactly what I was looking for. Bang'd it out real quick too, huh? Thanks, Lion, us salvagers all appreciate ya.
See ya!
Yep. You have yourself a fine day now. Alright, and let's see, we have somebody in here. Why is... Is it Sunday? Oh, I guess it is Sunday. Okay. There you go, Jensen.
Good morning, everyone.
Thanks, Builder. You're as reliable as the Atari Express.
Today, we'll be talking about struggle.
Okay, let's talk about struggle. Uh, let's see, we need... Something for Danby. I'm surprised Danby's usually in here. Oh wait, no, that's not Danby, this is, uh, Arvio. I was looking at the overlay and they were confusing me there. Alright. Let's go ahead and hand this over to Arvio. Wherever... There you are, morning. Uh, no, why did you wake me up? Uh, because I have your commission, that's why.
Hi there.
There you go.
Brilliant, what else could I expect coming from someone such as yourself? Please, take this for your troubles. Take it easy.
Thank you, Arvio. Okay. So in terms of missions, we really don't have a lot going today. Um, we got the Trial by Kiln, which is, I mean, according to this, does that actually mean we're gonna be waiting 18 days? For this diagram to get back to us? Lord. If that's actually what that means, that's a really long time to have this thing and make us wait for it. That just seems like a very long time. But honestly, other than that, I really don't know what else to do today. Um, I do know that we have the museum over here, we could probably go look for relics. Uh, but without, uh, the museum doesn't really have a running list. So it's kinda hard to know, like, what we still need to get and what we don't. I could do like a quick inventory of what I have in my supplies. And just sorta plan for that. Just sorta start planning ahead and just sorta do a gathering mission today. But, to be honest, I'm kind of at a standstill right now. Alright, let's start with stuff and just sorta, and start going down the way here. You know what else I should do is I should... I should separate this out. Animal hides are always a constant thing. We could go for... Some fish. Fishing wouldn't be a bad idea. Uh, I could go get opals, upgrading is always a thing. Uh, I can't go dating, I can't go on a playdate with Grace, but I guess I could go on a playdate with somebody else. And, I mean, I can always try to complete some relics. I've got all this gunpowder and I have no idea what to do with it. You know what? I'm gonna grab this out. And... Wait, where was it? It was here. I'm gonna put those here. And I guess I can go ahead and put this stuff away, you know what, I'm gonna put that in there too. Uh, let's go to our metals, put those in there, sort that. Uh, I've got water, gunpowder makes the bullets. Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, I remember that. Well, I mean, I could go gathering wood. Petrified wood is an ongoing thing. Gathering up and sort of getting these ready, pre-made, we're doing okay for it. We're not amazing, but we're doing okay. I could do some gardening today, but again, gardening... Honestly, kind of a hassle. Yeah, once again, we're kinda back to... We're kinda back to the relic thing again. Oh, I didn't realize I was so short on casting rods. Let me go ahead and make some casting rods. Oh, uh, maybe not this one. Cast iron rods. Let's make a few of those. Uh, and probably go get some iron while we're at it. Probably couldn't hurt to make some more iron plate. We don't really have a lot of that going either. That'll sorta use up our iron supplies. How much have I got over here going for iron? Or I should say steel, not iron. Uh, I have some... Going, you know what, that's probably something I'll do today too. We'll go out, we'll gather up. Uh, we'll just sorta do a gathering day today. Go, we'll grab up some metal, grab up some some petrified wood. Never hurts to have extra. Alright. Uh, the question is, where do I want to... Oh wow. Alright. Now I see a couple right here, you know what, oh, you know what, I remember plastic being kinda short too. So, let's maybe do some of that too. You know, now that I think about it, maybe the best thing to do would be to go and grab the scrap iron. That may not be a bad idea. We'll just, we'll go to... We'll go to the Euphala Salvage. Gather us up some iron scrap. And I think we'll just kinda use up our day and our energy just sorta gathering what we need. And sorta be in preparation for... For the future. I don't really know what's coming, but I imagine there's probably gonna be some fairly large fairly large projects coming up. And it never hurts to have more than you need. Alright, uh, opals, opals, ah, opals, there we go. Getting some opals and some rose stone would be probably a good idea too. I've got plenty of graphite, so I don't think I need to worry about that. Let's go ahead and chop some more of this. Ooh, my nose is itchy today. Alright. I just realized, you get a lot of experience for chopping those trees down. Wow, yeah, they really did add a bunch of new, uh... A bunch of new deadwood trees out here, didn't they? Okay, hold on. Okay, hold... Don't get nervous, tin foil. If I was that close to a horse's wiener, I wouldn't be worried about being pissed off. I'd be more worried about being pissed on. And if you know that movie quote, then you are properly up on your geeky movie trivia, congratulations. Whoa. Excuse me, sir. I'm gonna need you to cease and desist while you're doing it right now. Thank you. Alright, um... Alright, this looks like it's, uh... It looks like it's okay. Uh, do I wanna... Oh, yep, plastic. Gotta get plastic. Don't have a lot of those going. There we go. That's... Looks like we got three trees over here. We'll go ahead and chop these trees. And then we'll just take whatever's left of our energy. And we'll go mine up some scrap. Alright. Uh, go over here and that's eat, eat. Uh, where's... Oh, there it is. Eat, eat. That's all I brought with me, huh? I guess that's all I brought with me. I don't have as much... Uh-oh. I don't have as much energy as I was hoping for. Tell you what, we'll just finish off this one here. And then I'll head back and go see if I can't load up on on some stamina again. And then we'll just spend that stamina on getting some more iron scrap. Man, today's a boring day. There's just not a lot going on today. I guess every once in a while, when you're, you know, when you're in a game like this, sometimes you just have those days where there's just not a lot going on. It is what it is. It's those days that the game gives you in order to give you a chance to be able to just, you know, catch up on what you've got going. Uh, to be able to... Uh, to be able to sorta catch your breath. And gather up supplies and just sorta, you know, getting ready for the next big push. Alright, how about some cold cactus, some fish porridge, some chopped pepper fish head, some rice omelet, fruit salad and sandate milk. There we go. And, let's see. Let's go ahead and just buy up all this veggie stir fry. And I just realized, I have 20,000 galls. I should probably think very heavily about expanding my area. Let's go over and do that real quick. Alright, expand the yard. Pen fur. Alright. What's the next expansion? Oh, for Pete's sake. Alright, what's the next expansion gonna cost me? Forty-five thousand! Wow! And I thought eighteen thousand was bad enough. Alright, let's head over here, we still got about an hour and a half, let's just go ahead and use up some time getting some iron scrap. That... Wow, that is some expensive land once you get up to the higher levels. Alright. And let's hop into here, let's see, there's one right there, but I'm gonna have to kill this guy first. Are you gonna finish it before we run out of energy? Yes. Alright. Let's go drop off. The iron scrap that we have. Oh, and I've got... Really, I got copper and... Okay. I didn't realize that I was going to have copper scrap, I was sort of expecting the mechanical and iron, but... Okay, let's go ahead and throw that in there. And get the plastic going. Let's go ahead and gather up everything. Alright, come on, tin foil, we got places to be. Come on, Elsie. We have a town hall meeting to get to. Well, hello, Grace. Well, hello, Grace. What are you doing over here? Hey, beautiful. What you doing all the way over here?
Hey, if I uncover a forbidden relic from an archaeological ruin, let's say a ray gun, do you think I could leave it at your place for a couple of days for safe keep? Uh, no, no, just one of my kooky hypotheticals.
Absolutely you can, as long as you don't mind me using it.
See ya.
Cause I probably would.
Welcome, everyone. Trudy has some exciting news to announce. No fooling. Trudy, if you please.
Um, I'd like to give an update on how the latest tree planting experiment went. We're still collecting data, and Zeke is communicating with the botanist in Hywin, as well as the church to get some second opinions. We're also working on growth trajectory, as well as the amount of water needed. With that said, yes, the rumors are true. It actually went really well. And probably well. You can go over to our little woods by the gecko station ruins and check it out yourself. We were able to grow vegetation in the desert. All thanks to the hard work of Zeke and Director Chi, as well as our two resourceful builders.
And Nia, let's not forget Nia.
I just knew it! Sandrock forever!
Wow!
I can't believe it!
I suppose when you keep trying, good things happen.
Way to go, y'all!
I can really see that ray of hope. Now, let me introduce this gentleman next to me. For those of you who haven't met him, this here is Ernest, the reporter from Atara who wants to do a story on our mayor's progress with the little woods.
And for anyone who knows anything about classic theater, we all know the importance of being earnest.
I believe some of you know me already, but to those of you who don't, hello, I'm Ernest. I've been doing a few pieces on Sandrock, and my next one will be on this new method of planting you all have discovered. I'm going to be interviewing some of you in the coming days, and also taking pictures of the trees you have growing out in the desert. It'll be an ongoing piece. I'll be putting out articles as this greenery project continues to make progress.
Ahem, yes. We welcome you back with open arms, Mr. Ernest. That is, once the forest has grown out a bit more, which it certainly will.
Wonderful. As they say in Bonnaroc, counting your chickens before they hatch is a good way to predict how many chickens you'll soon have.
Right. Anywho, everyone is invited to be in a group photo, so I hope you can all try to stay flexible within the next few days. City Hall will send out a letter with the time and date as soon as possible. You all wouldn't want to miss a chance to be in the biggest paper in the free cities, would you? So then, if there are no objections, for the feature photograph, I thought it would be most fitting to feature the person most responsible for all our success. Give it up for the botanist who never bowed out, Sandrock's very own, Zeke!
Yay!
Hold up. I said I'd do the group photo. I don't wanna be on the front page or nothing. You should do it, Trudy.
Me? Well, I-
Trudy! We can't just put any Johnny come lately as the face of Sandrock. What she done for us and she got back anyway, other than almost getting both our builders killed at the shipwreck ruins. Way I see it, personally, I oughta be thinking other than Zeke is good Minister Matilda.
Now, hold on a tick.
This is our ray of hope.
Yeah, when I heard that, I was like, whoa.
I mean, Matilda has led us through some of the most troubled times I've ever seen in this town.
I says we put Matilda on the front of one of them funny papers as a code commemoration for all she's done in this town. All in favor, say aye. There you have it, balls in your court, mayor.
Did I hear any ayes?
Uh, uh, sure. I mean, if that's how everyone feels about it. Minister Matilda, at the behest of our fine citizens, would you do us the honor of appearing on the front page of this article?
Oh, I couldn't.
The mob has spoken.
Really? It's alright. You've earned this, Matilda, as well as Zeke and our builders. We couldn't have done it without you either.
Mm-hmm. Uh, goodness, y'all. I'm at a loss for words. I only ever wanted what was best for Sandrock. I was only ever doing what the light put me here to do. But if it'll make y'all happy, then yes, I accept this exceptionally high honor. Thank you, Sandrockers.
Does this work for you, Ernest?
There's the clapping.
Um, sure. It's up to you guys, I guess.
Uh, a- alright then. Everyone, keep an eye on your mailboxes. I'll let everyone know when we're ready to take the photo. Meeting adjourned. Couldn't-
Conserve water.
Conserve water.
Serve water.
Hear that, folks?
Yeah!
Be more generous!
Today's sermon will be on the topic of the day of calamity. Well, right?
For this, I have to go all the way back to the beginning of the human race.
I'm not sure I like where this is going.
Hey there!
That makes sense.
I must say, I'm flustered that the townfolk want me to appear in the article that represents all of our hard work. Trudy and Zeke most of all, but here in Sandrock, optics like that don't matter. We all know who to thank for this. That includes you too.
Dagery, Zee.
This, this game's definitely taking a much different... A much different tack on, on how...
Hello?
How, uh, how the plotline is going. Alright, Trudy's tree farm is really, really is working. With this kind of exposure, I have a strong feeling we're gonna be able to secure funding for our Portia idea soon. Then Sandrock is gonna be a powerhouse.
So long, partner.
Hmm. I don't know, something... I'm not sure I like where, where, where this is going here. Uh, okay, no, we still got... Still got, got that, bleh, still got more going on that. Hmm. I mean... Trudy?
Hello?
Howdy.
How you doing? Uh, nobody really asked, but we're not trying to plant a whole forest, not yet anyway. But once the world sees what we've accomplished already, I'm confident it'll put Sandrock back on the right track. Well, somewhat confident.
See ya.
Huh. I don't know, this... The, the, the way things are going... This seems like a very- oh, shoot, I was gonna buy water today! The way things are going in Sandrock here, I'm, I'm kinda feeling like... I, I might have been right to begin with, and that there is in fact a, a conspiracy going on inside, uh, you know, in, in Sandrock to... I don't know, to undermine, uh, undermine the mayor and end up like... I don't know, to trying to supplant the, you know, the Church of the Light, I mean, uh, the, the... Trying to supplant the existing government for the Church of the Light. I'd say at least that's what it seems like to me. Alright, we've got more water here. Let me go ahead and top off our generator. Water. There we go. There we go. I think too hard? I don't, I don't think I'm thinking too hard. Alright, let me go ahead and gather up all this stuff. You think maybe... Eh, for now, I think I'm just gonna leave everything as it currently is. Um, I normally like push everything back one. I mean, I might do that with the water here. Actually, I think I will do it with the water collectors, but... Oh, stop that. Like that. Sort everything into their respective houses. Alright. I think I will go ahead and move these back. Is that- okay, no, that's as far as it goes. There we go. I'm telling you, there's a conspiracy. The Church of the Light is trying to take over Sandrock. There we go. Alright, and I suppose I could move this back into the corner. Although I kinda like where it is right now. Maybe if I put anything in the corner, I could just start storing more chests back there for more storage. Might be faster in build mode. Eh, yeah, I could. But that, that would require me going all the way over there, and I, I mean, we're, we're already at ten thirty. I don't wanna, I don't wanna risk being... Go, go into bed late today. Uh... I have, oh, right, okay, I don't have anything. I don't have to get into that? Do I, is it... No, that's a quick save. Take picture. I'm not aware of being able to get into build mode from here. How can I get into it from here? Uh, I don't have the ability to do that. Maybe I haven't reached that point in the game yet. The builder kit? Don't I have a builder kit? I thought I had a builder kit. Maybe I don't. Alright, uh... You know what? I'm just gonna put that in there. It's not gonna hurt anything. It's not like it's not gonna get used. Okay, um, and I guess that's it. I guess I'll go ahead and just head on to bed. It looks like the farming kits. I could've sworn I had something like that already, but maybe I didn't. I don't know.